All right, let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this beautiful day and the weather that we've had. I thank you for allowing all of us to gather here together this evening. Father, we pray for not just our community, but for the entire country as we're going through some challenging times. And, Lord, I pray for your guidance in the coming weeks and months ahead, and I pray for healing for our entire country. But, Lord, I thank you and I pray for a wonderful meeting this evening as we serve all the residents of our wonderful town. Father, we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
May I pray? Want to leave some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And everyone should have got a copy of all these minutes from May 11. Comments, questions, corrections?
So I move to approve the May 11, 2020 minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you very much. We do have a presentation for former councilman Hayden Hammond, but we'll just move on in case it shows up in a little bit. Okay. Rebecca Treasure, report please.
All right, we'll review a few things in your financial packet for the period ending May 31st. During the month, there were no transfers to or from the checking account. We are 92% through the budget year. I will bring to your attention one particular item in this income statement is the income tax. We've had several discussions about what we think will happen with that number. We did receive the May distribution. It was 22% higher than the same time last year. I do think we will reach the budget for FY '20, and we may even have a surplus for FY '20. After we do my first agenda item, which is reviewing and approving some budget amendments that I'm requesting, I'll spend some more time talking about additional information that I have read. I attended a webinar, and there's some things I want to just convey about what we think is going to happen with budgets going forward. Well, let's go ahead, and since the budget amendments do affect FY '20, it's number three and number four, and this is to formalize the action that council took at its last month's meeting to approve two roofing projects, one here at this building and one at the sludge building at the treatment plant. For this building, we'll have to pervert fund balance at this time to pay for that. Ultimately, when the audit is finished, we may find that there was enough revenue to cover, but at this point, I just can't be sure. So we'll have this transfer from fund balance if necessary, but at least we're putting it on books.
Just in case you don't think there's going to be anything else we might need that for?
At this time, not at the moment.
No, okay, good.
We do have a line item or two in that department that has gone over budget, but we also have another reserve line that is available.
Okay.
If more line items go over budget than I anticipate.
Okay.
I think we said last time, once this is approved, these projects will start, I missed immediately, right?
I did ask Beth for an update. There are some logistics issues with them being able to be on-site here. Some electrical work has to be done between the buildings before it's safe enough for them to do the job.
The electrical lines need to be put on their underground.
Okay.
So Rebecca's doing that up there.
We did sign the paperwork, though, and it is proceeding, and we got a similar for shingle color and things like that.
Okay.
So these will need council approval.
Motion and second.
All right, I move to approve budget amendments BJ 03-20 and BJ 04-20 to fund a new roof for town hall, and the sludge drying bids approved at the May 11, 2020 town council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much.
So I'll spend a few minutes just communicating things that I've read about how the state anticipates the next few fiscal years are going to go based on the income tax effects, sales tax effects. Obviously, we don't collect sales tax here, but they're doing as much analytics as they can to try to figure out how it's going to affect the state budget and then the trickle-down effect to all of the local jurisdictions. I did attend the MML webinar on Friday, and there were two presenters. The first one was the most meaningful, I think, for us, and a few key metrics that they talked about. The St. Mary's has the lowest unemployment rate of all counties in the state around. I guess we can assume because of the base. So that was...
Sense of pain, that might be helpful.
Right, right. It was almost the lowest before, but afterwards, it is the lowest. There are also some forecasting models that the state has been using, and what they're trying to predict is based on... And they forecast multi-years out. I don't necessarily do that here. But what they were trying to predict is a more... A recovery that would be more like a U-shape, which is we're in this dip, and then we quickly go up, and then a recovery that looks more like a swoosh, which is a slower and farther-out recovery. So taking those two scenarios, they tried to predict how is it going to affect income tax. And I feel like for Lenartown, not only do we have the lower unemployment, but we also have the benefit of growth. So my... My... What's the word I'm looking for? My impression is that any forecast that the state has for the state as a whole would not be as great of an effect for Lenartown. We have that on top of the fact that we're developing budgets annually that use a lot of our revenue for one-time capital items. So even if going forward, we experience a bigger drop than I would ever anticipate, we do have the ability to fund recurring expenses, we would just have to cut back on those one-time capital items. So I just want you all to have some level of comfort that I think we're in a position to be able to move forward and not have a really big effect on regular operations or services that, you know, we will continue to provide.
So you think that people moving into town with all the new developments will kind of balance out the...
Right, that's the one component, is we've got growth coming and the lower unemployment. So those two should give us a cushion that maybe not a lot of other jurisdictions are going to have the benefit of having.
Very likely.
What is the unemployment rate? 5%?
It was 2.8, and now it's 7.30. But there's a jurisdiction in here that's 22.8 unemployment. We did receive also some updated projections for highway user revenue. So in FY '20 budget, we had originally anticipated 181,000. They're saying it might be closer to 174,000. Manageable. For FY '21, we approved 207,000. They're projecting 184,000. So obviously, we have time to make modifications for both of those because we haven't spent all of that highway user money yet this year, and we only have three weeks left to go. So I think we're fine there. And despite those reductions, we're seeing that '21 would even be higher than '20. So that's not as big of a concern as maybe some people thought as well. So any other concerns?
The 2020 overage that we'll have, does it have to be used in a certain timeframe or...
There is no time limit. It just has to be used for a certain purpose.
Yeah, same purpose.
Yes, and that gets tracked year over year. Exactly. So if there's no other concerns, then obviously, anybody trying to predict what's going to happen is just using a lot of assumptions. And until we get farther down the road, we won't... None of us will really ever know.
We've already seen that.
Right. So if there's no issues there, I'll move on to the last item in my report. I did put together a pretty lengthy memo and with supporting documentation to address my recommendation, which is to change the town's property insurance carrier. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review that. Just briefly, we've had the same broker since the early 90s. We went through a period of time where private insurance companies were able to offer a very competitive premium for local government business, and there really wasn't any reason to change, but I feel like it's time to change. And you can see the property quote from Legit has a significant difference from what we're currently paying, and supporting documentation to list how many members there are in the state of Maryland. We already do have liability coverage with Legit. I'm extremely happy with their customer service. They have robust training opportunities. I'm looking forward to having someone actually physically visit every single property that we have and make an inventory, assess its condition, and come up with a really nice revised statement of values so that we can be sure that we have the proper coverage for all of our buildings.
Actually, I was on the council back in the 80s when we moved the liability from the private carrier to Legit. At that point, in the 80s, liability rates were just skyrocketing just because of all the lawsuits, and we probably got that straightened out. But yeah, we didn't have any choice but to move that at that point, so this would be adding to that package if we already have contract.
What does this mean when it says the town is generally experiencing one property loss per year, just out of curiosity?
That was at the time that it was bid in early 90s.
I mean, what were we losing?
So we just had a... Well, if a building got hit by a car, I can't even remember what kind of losses it was.
I was on the council when the garbage truck overturned and was totaled, so it's those kind of losses.
So like a claim?
Claim.
Gotcha.
We haven't had a property loss year in a really long time. But at the time, that was sort of the norm, one property loss per year.
So for the training Rebecca that they offer, is that online and in-person? Because I know for the county, we have access to their website for classes, and recently, Larry just came on-site and did a class with everybody.
Right, they actually travel around the whole entire state, and they'll... We're probably too small for them to do an individualized training, but I have taken advantage of training that they do in the southern Maryland area. I know defensive driving is a really big deal. I think that Tom's hosted those before, so yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we've had... We have them where I work, and they've been great, training and everything, and, you know, we've had a couple claims, and they've been really easy to work with.
Yeah, and really, back in the 80s, most private companies got out of insuring municipalities and governments in general, so it's probably not going to be as on average.
It's a significant difference, so yeah, it's huge.
And the issue, obviously, because of the monetary threshold over the course of the year, we would have to ask council to agree to waive the sealed bid requirements, which in order to prosecute that, it'd have to be someone out of house to do that. I just don't have the expertise to put all that together. You need a current department pretty much to do that, so it's a two-way...
Well, we already have a relationship with Legit, so it's not, you know, just taking it to a whole different company.
So we're adding it on to the existing liability policy we have?
All right, I move to approve the local government insurance trust as provider of property insurance for the town outside of sealed bid requirements.
I'll second.
Second by Mary. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see if we have former councilmember Hayden Hammond here with us. Thank you very much. Council, we have a few things to hold up.
Proclamation here from the state of Maryland, Governor of the state of Maryland, to Hayden Tyson Hammond. Read these, Vietnam, that on behalf of the citizens of this state, recognition of a well-deserved tribute to honor you for your commendable work and professional commitment, exceeding expectations to your efforts on behalf of the people of Maryland as a councilman with the town of Lenartown, with appreciation for making a positive contribution to the community and our state, and as our citizens joined together in expressing a great respect, admiration, and sincere best wishes for continued success. We are pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation, signed by the governor, Larry Hogan, Roy Buthver, and John Wilkens, Secretary of State.
Thank you very much. Very good. Congratulations. We've got this...
Oh, that's cool. That's pretty cool.
This picture of the wolf on this tree for you, Hayden T. Haley, council member from 2012 to 2020, in appreciation of your service to the town of Lenartown.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Looking forward to...
Enjoyed serving with you for eight years.
Yes.
Congratulations, Nick, on your new position, Councilman Colvin, I should say.
Look forward to working with you in the future, Tim.
Best wishes, and God bless and all the work you do. Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you for your service.
Appreciation, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, man.
Okay, everyone should receive the Colvin office's place report. Oh, yeah, I skipped our guest.
For our planning department, we do not have a meeting scheduled this month. There was nothing for the agenda. Originally, we were going to do the public hearing for the text amendments at this month's meeting. I think it's going to be better. Hopefully, we'll be able to have actual live meetings in July. The audience participation will be easier, so I think timing-wise, that'll work out better, and then that would put the ordinances to you at the August meeting for a public hearing as well. And then for last month's meeting, Metas, the town run received a favorable recommendation to you all for approval of phase two. That will be on your agenda next month for that, and Dan and I do have a meeting with them this week to just begin discussion about the Wilkens and Horns, since we're moving forward with the water tower already, to have some discussion on whether they're able to have that.
Okay, is that it? If anyone has any questions on Chris, please, so report. Please report.
Looks like she's been busy.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, who reports?
Okay, I don't really have a lot on the agenda. Just, we've been so busy with all the COVID response and the protests last week, trying to organize that, trying to work with the restaurants. It's been a real process getting them open and safe spaces, outdoor spaces. We had to jump through a lot of hoops between the liquor board, the health department, the sheriff's department, the fire marshal. We're just trying to help the businesses get back open again. I'm still working with a couple restaurants that weren't in a hurry to do it, but a lot of them were open on Friday, and we had a nice crowd in town. The mayor and I also met several times with the sheriff's department, working with them to coordinate the protests. Wish everything went well with that. The hospital had a plane parade. We posted a video today on our social media, if you haven't seen it. They submitted it to us from the airport group that did the flyby. That was very much appreciated by the hospital staff, and it is a neat video, if you get a chance to watch it. We're also collaborating closely with LBA and economic development. They have put out... Economic Development has put out a grant for small businesses. Last week, we came out, they lowered some of the qualifications this week, so working with some of the businesses to make sure that they have the information. And also, we're putting together a campaign just to support the businesses as we open back up and try to really promote the businesses and make it a coordinated effort. We also had a request from Metcom after the agenda was done, but it is kind of COVID-related, and it would just require consensus. Metcom is working with the health department and the college, St. Mary's College, for a pilot program to monitor wastewater to detect coronavirus in individual systems so that eventually, they may be able to predict if there's going to be a surge in cases based on areas of the county. Metcom is currently doing the pilot program all over the county at their facilities, and they've asked if we would want to participate in that. It's just a one-time, collect a sample. The guys do that every day, so they would collect a sample and submit it to Metcom, and then the college would make it part of the study. If we end up... If it's successful and it carries on into the future and is something that we want to participate in down the road, there may be some financial costs associated with it. There is none associated with this, so it's just a matter of if we want to participate in the one-time sample, and then we can readdress it later on. I gave you a press release and newspaper article about the program, so if you just want to let me know if there have been anything, if we have issues with it, or if you're good with just naming it.
I think we're definitely moving forward with this question.
I think you said, LaShaw, it's just a one-time test. Is that right?
Yes, this one is, and if we, you know, come back and decide they have a more expansive program that's ongoing, we could have to pay for some of the testing. They don't have that in place yet. This is just to see.
Okay. Yeah, I have no issue with it. You're good.
Anyone have any concerns?
The last thing is, we did hire a new operator trainee, as we talked about last month. Jay Johnson retired, Joe Boosier became the superintendent, so we did have a new trainee start, his name's James Cornet, and hopefully, a good chance to meet him. Really nice guy, and he's very excited to be part of this group, so be welcome to him.
Okay, thank you. Moving to my report, I just want to say thank you to the organizers of the two peaceful protests last week, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the whole town. We would all agree, the means of death of George Floyd was deplorable and unacceptable. I would like to thank the sheriff, his staff, and all involved in monitoring and controlling the protests. The sheriff met with the organizers beforehand and came to agreement on the location and timeframe of both events, and I think everyone was enthused and happy with the outcomes. I want to also thank Governor Hogan for moving forward with the opening of the Maryland. Look forward to more openings that come sooner rather than later, so I think the businesses are happy that are able to do some things now, but of course, we just need to keep moving forward, so I'm sure that will happen. Like, yeah, we're doing fine down here. I realize some of the jurisdictions are just like we do now, so hopefully, we'll keep moving forward, so I anticipate that. Okay, we've been on council reports. Beth, Tyler?
All right. Thank you. So the Lenartown, Maryland website has seen a traffic increase of almost 2,000 visitors since it launched in April, and the site includes cooking classes, fitness classes, educational tutorials, and has expanded the list of content on that webpage. Additionally, there's musical artists and shows that can be previewed on there as well, such as Robbie Booth and Donovan, which was the Friday night party. So it's great to see how Lenartown has adapted to the events being shut down, and the website's been great content. I know a lot of it's shared on Facebook, and that's when I catch a lot of the videos. So currently, we're still continuing the plan for the 18th Annual Beach Party, which would be Saturday, August 8. And as you mentioned, the way that Maryland seems to be opening up, it looks more and more like a possibility at this time, and that's it for you, Vince?
Okay. Hopefully, I know we're getting... Michelle was telling me today, we're getting calls, or Rain's getting calls from vendors and the entertainment wanting to know if we're still going to have it, because they're going to try to make other arrangements, so we'll have to make that decision here soon. I did hear today that the fairs are kind of going to make their decision probably this week, so we're going to see where that goes. I said we wait a couple more weeks before we decide on the beach line.
Okay.
That's fair.
Okay. All right, Nick, new development in planning?
All right. So I don't really have a lot to report. There was about six use and occupancy permits issued last month, and had about 19 permits issued, so there's still a bit of work going on, which is good. The Meadows of Town Run, I drove by there, there's still homes being built, so it's great to see all the work continuing. And the Lenartown Library and Garvey Center, the town issued the temporary UNO for them. I actually drove by about two weeks ago. I hadn't... Couldn't go inside, but I was able to drive around, and it looks great. They really did a great job with it, so I'm looking forward to when that's up and running. That's about everything I had.
I ran into a project manager out at Clark's Rest a couple weeks ago, and this was on a Monday. He said that following weekend, they sold three homes at Clark's Rest during this... Yeah.
Well, they also did the same thing. I talked to Robbie today, and they sold one each of the last two we got, and they really feel like things are going well.
That's great.
That's good.
Real estate market's still kicking. Yeah.
And, you know, on the insurance side, people are buying cars and buying homes.
Furniture, everybody's tired of looking at the same four walls. Time to remodel.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been getting at work a ton of missed utility calls because people are doing outdoor renovations at their houses. Tons of landscaping going on. Time to buy stock and lose. Yeah.
Well, and I tried to use a... One of the electricians that I actually insured moved those, well, not moved them up the lines next door, but put in a new box that's required. He's so busy, he said, "You've got to give somewhere else." They are busy, so...
Okay, thank you, Nick. Utilities, Chris?
I don't have a whole lot, other than the Route 5 water main relocations back up and going. Seems to be going okay. They have the cones out. Everything always seems to be nice and clean, so it seems to be going all right. I do want to thank staff for working with the businesses and getting all those barriers. It looks nice. I mean, I think it's as good as we can get it, and it seems to be people are enjoying it, so it's good to see people coming back into town. And we've also done a bunch of the carryout. It's been great, the Quality Street. The Quality Street we've done, they have pick up, like, meals and things. It's really cool. In the pub and everybody, all the restaurants. It's been, been nice.
And PB and H actually got the barricades for us. So we got to thank them. And they really worked hard to get those like overnight for us. I wanted to get them before you called. So I called them right away and he had them delivered the next day. So that's really awesome.
Yeah, it seems to be working out great.
Okay. Jay, some Maryland useful questions.
Mayor, thank you. Just bear with me because I have notes everywhere here. So, but I wrote down. So May 13, 2020 was our SMMA virtual meeting, a successful meeting. So LaPlata took over the chapter. And I never knew how to pronounce his last name, but I call him Mayor Andrew of Port Tobacco. He's going to be the president. And vice president's Mayor Janine James of LaPlata. And secretary was Matt Simpson from LaPlata. And I'm going to continue to serve as the district vice president for another year. We also have our virtual MML conference, summer conference, June 29th and 30th. I know I signed up and I think I saw where Nick, you're.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone else was going to sign up for that. I cannot recall the high school banners. Was that before or after our last meeting? Have we talked about that?
We had just gotten them that day.
Okay.
We didn't have them up yet.
They weren't up. So I did participate in helping putting them up. I know Mayor Burris did and LaShaw and a lot of the council. I think they look great.
Yeah. Set my kids up the ladder. They're traumatized. Another going back.
A lot of positive feedback in regards to the high school banners. Let's see. I did attend a flyer at Mid-Stor St. Mary's Hospital. That was, that was very neat, what they did for the healthcare workers. Again, to echo the mayor, two successful protests in Leonardtown. I worked both of them. Again, thank you to Sheriff Tim Cameron and the entire state police. I think they both went absolutely outstanding. It was a great crowd, great turnout. To my knowledge, there were no major issues. And so I thank everyone that participated in that.
You know, there was a national shout-out for Leonardtown.
Yeah, I was about to say that.
I saw that, yes. Somebody had that on Facebook.
Yeah, my husband had to rewind and was like, wait, I think they said Leonardtown.
Yeah. Yep, so the protest went very well.
I know it was on Good Morning America.
CBS today or Good Morning America, something like that. Yeah, it was awesome.
What else do I have here? Let me just, again, congratulations to Jay Johnson on his retirement and congratulations to Joe on his promotion. I'm sure he'll do very well in his new role. Again, when it comes to the restaurants and outdoor seating, LaShaw, Mayor, I know you worked hard on that and the rest of the staff. So thank you. I think everyone's enjoying the outdoor seating. And I kind of like how it's extended, so it's nice. I do believe that is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary, there's development retention.
Well, thanks, Jay. You just took everything off my list. I just checked everything. But I also want to talk about the high school banners, how wonderful they were. It was a good time putting them up. And that's something I'd like to do. I wonder if we can do that every year just because I think it's so small town to be able to say, you know, hey, look, my town actually put my name up. That was part of our high school. And Jay and I talked about it, it wasn't very expensive. So that's something that we could maybe put in the budget to do every year.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I mean, that's your guys' call. We had a significant sponsor. They should cut the cost down. So that's just something you have to do.
Yeah, but I mean, I think such a great turnout. Like you said, so many people are coming in, you know, getting their picture underneath their banner and they're posting it on Facebook. And that's just good all around. And so small town and I just, I love it. And I spent the weekend walking around downtown Leonardtown this weekend, you know, walking my dog and getting to see all the safe spaces, you know, the people using it. Antonad's garden, they've got the Adirondack chairs out there and seeing people out there sipping wine. And it's just really been a wonderful, wonderful vibe. So, yeah, it was a good job. I did notice that there were some really overflowing trash cans. And I think you guys probably knew about that because it seems like there was trash cans, extra trash cans put out.
They actually called me down there emptying them one Saturday.
Yeah, so I think, you know.
Even with the extra?
Yeah.
There, yeah, there was extra trash cans. And but I did see, you know, that there was a lot of trash out there. So I don't know how to deal with it, but I think we're aware of it. And I mean, that's good, you know, as long as we've got people coming in. If we can just figure out how to get all the trash and equal.
People weren't using the blue, the dumpsters that we put down there because they have to open them up. They're just throwing everything in free trash cans. So that's why I was down there emptying into the.
Well, and everybody's got those plastic takeout containers now. So it seemed like they were just so much bigger. So I don't know how to handle it, but I'm going to.
Just need to open the lids and have it open. It was not raining.
Right, I was going to say, I was concerned.
Or keep them cracked somehow if they can, like, just be, they probably won't blow away.
We've learned we have to keep them open. We have to use something just.
And not just because now, but, yeah, all the time, all the.
People don't want to touch them. I mean, I get it.
Yeah.
But, you know, good that people are out there and if we can just figure out a way. And like I said, it looked like you guys were aware of it, so.
The dumpster was a dwarf and then the square.
Yeah, but you're right. Maybe just leaving the bin open or putting a second trash can next to it. I don't know what to do about it.
That's, the canes that are there, I've got a dumpster next to them.